First up is our Pledge of Allegiance and we are very honored tonight to have with us Isabella Rambler. Isabella is currently a 6th grader at the National Inventors Hall of Fame Center for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. She has been a straight A student while attending NIPSTM Middle School and previously at Richmond CLC as well. For the past two years, Isabella has received a perfect score on her English Language Arts Ohio State test. This accomplishment is the result of her fondness for writing poetry and reading fiction. She shares her amazing writing ability daily at her school. She uses descriptive, lively, and imaginative works to paint a picture for the reader. Isabella is a creative thinker and has been both the inspiration and the imagination learner of the month at NIPSTM Middle School. Isabella, will you come up and lead us in the play?
Good. (Singing) The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose soul we're living, and just a strong...
Do you want to tell us who your friends are today?
My mom, my dad, my sister's family.
And Isabella goes to school with my son, so I also asked her to put an eye on him. (Laughter)
Mr. Bravo, can I add something to you also?
Yes.
Isabella gave a presentation that I got to see in the library at STEM. She showed us some interactive books that have technology in them and just really wowed the group she was presenting to, so she did a fantastic job at that also, so wanted to thank her for that.
Thank you for being here and thanks for being such a good student. Next, community and school reflections. Would anyone like to begin?
I had the opportunity of going to Case and to share with their museum where they represented, the students represented various characters throughout history. And you would push a button and they would share with you if it was Rosa Parks, if it was Amelia Earhart, whoever that individual was, they would tell you information about them. So they all did a wonderful job. Some of them were dressed in period costumes as much as possible, so we got a good view as to who the character was that they were representing. So that was a good activity. And then I went to a portion of the school readiness summit that was held, and that was very informative and very challenging. And there were some interactive activities at our tables. So I had quite a few people working with Head Start that were at the table, probably seated, and how they were interacting with our young people. And then our college and career activities with all of our schools, our students, our parents, had opportunity to go through that, and that was, I think, outstanding. Everyone did an excellent job. The students particularly, the students had an opportunity to talk about their various activities, careers, that they were looking at or participating in school. So they did a wonderful job. Students, as I said, participated and shared. Teachers sort of took a back, give demonstration. And I think particularly for parents, I think it was eye-opening to see all the offerings that we have in our college and career and as we move towards our academy. And I think the students were also very, very much involved and engaged in the presentations that were made. And then at Buckto hosted, the Buckto Cluster holders hosted the LeBron James Family Foundation. And this year, they did a different presentation to highlight all of the things that they've done and the supporting partnerships that they're working with as we move towards in the next few weeks, looking at the LeBron James Family Foundation, I Promise School. So I think all those were very positive activities in the life of our community.
Had an opportunity, went to a couple of things at Reverend Walker, just talked about the Hometown Hall for LeBron James Family Foundation. Always good to see the people in the community, the students and the parents that are involved in that. Same evening, Project Ujima, had, Ujima had their open house for their new offices and facilities, so they're sort of growing. They've outgrown, you know, working out of people's houses and actually have their own offices over on Hawkins Avenue. That was a nice evening, got to talk with a couple of different people from the Buckto Cluster as well that were attending and are involved with that group, so that was a very nice function. Also, on the business side of things, got to attend, OSBA had a legislative update and it was just, you know, two hours listening and learning about what's going on in Columbus that's going to affect us, whether it's the school system or the students and parents and everything. Some of the usual, you know, suspect type of bills, still talking about Common Core, changing testing, changes to the third grade reading guarantee, things that I guess we sort of lobby against, just give us some stability for once in our life so we can move forward on things, pulling a rug out from under us once a year. Couple interesting things, there's a couple Senate bills going on about bullying in the Senate, actually sponsored by the same senator, but ones in the Senate Judiciary Committee and the others in the Education Committee. And it's interesting because they're talking about making bullying an actual criminal offense to help the school systems, I guess, and interesting listening to what they're trying to do there. There's also a House bill pending, similar type of thing, so a lot of things going on in Columbus that we just happen to keep our ears in. Thank you.
I had quite a few things that I've been to in the last two weeks, it's been a very busy two weeks, but I just want to highlight a few that involve students and staff that I really enjoyed, as well as Reverend Walker. I did get to go over during the 8th grade showcase and walk around with the students. The passports were fantastic and posted a lot of great pictures on Facebook of the students presenting to other students. They were, it was, it was great to watch that, that peer mentoring of, of other students, encouraging them on what they might want to try as a career. I also got to go to the Dream 2018 Conference at the Knight Center, which was for all of our seniors. So all of the seniors in Akron Public Schools went to what was a very professional conference. Not only did they get to go through a fair, like we all do when we go to a professional conference, where they got to talk to colleges, talk to recruiters, they had jobs there, the Metro Parks were there hiring, several other, other places were hiring our seniors so that they could work over the summer before they go onto college, or maybe they could find a career. So that was great. But in addition to that, there were breakout sessions, breakout sessions on finances and how to pay for college. What's it like to be a first-year, first-in-generation college student? So I got to walk around and see how that was going. Had a chance to participate in the Read to Me Day for, at Pfeiffer Elementary with United Way, and what a fantastic time. They're doing a great job over at Pfeiffer. The teachers were dynamic and excited and the kids were so happy to be there and so engaged in the reading. I got to be with my work colleagues, my day job colleagues, and to show off one of our schools and get to show off our kids to them, they were, they were incredibly impressed. So kudos to United Way and to the Pfeiffer staff for that. This past weekend was the swim marathon over at Firestone High School where our students raised money for Children's Hospital. And they swam for 12 straight hours, started 6:00 AM on a Saturday and swam till 6:00 PM on a Saturday. That's a great sacrifice, and so we appreciate that. And then, let's see, how to pick what's last. Got to go to two concerts. Firestone High School was involved with their normal fall concert, and then in addition, last night, Mr. Bravo and I were both at a joint concert at Westminster Presbyterian on the west side of Akron where they sang in a concert with Revere High School, Kent's Men's and Women's Chorus, so it was a fantastic experience to get to expose them to what they might be able to go on to in college and to combine those two schools. So those are highlights of things that I really wanted to highlight about our students and our staff, so thanks very much.
I just have two things. One is that I got a chance to go to the NWAACP Dinner yesterday with a number of us who were board members who were there. What always, my highlight to me is always seeing the kids that get awarded and all the things that they do, I just enjoy that. So that was the biggest part for me. The speaker was good, but the kids are more to me, so it was good to see the kids that were getting awards there. And I just wanted to bring to our attention too, and keep on alert for all of us, is for the past probably two weeks, probably about three days out of the two weeks, I have gotten information from somewhere, from somebody, talking about bullying, you know, and it started coming to my radar about bullying, and I wanted to make sure that we here at Akron Public Schools, make sure that we keep an eye on bullying so that our kids will not have to go to school and be bullied, and the bullies will learn that they shouldn't be bullies because how it affects not just the kids, but it affects them and their homes and other people as well. So I just wanted to make sure that we continue to watch how bullying is in our school and hopefully be proactive and prevent that from happening. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm going to move my comments for President's Report up to now because we're on. So tomorrow, you know, tomorrow I mentioned earlier is Election Day, so I just want to remind everyone to get out and vote, it doesn't, you know, it's not important, well, it is important, who you vote for so much as that you go out and exercise your right to vote. I had the opportunity of working the polls recently and, and one of, someone that I know was working with the Napoli's population, for example, some that have recently become citizens and earned their right to vote, and brought them over literally in a bus and were just so excited, they were so excited to be able to exercise their right to vote, and it's so important that we get out there and do that. And so we would ask that you just, that you go out and exercise your right. This board has also passed a resolution in support of Issue 4, so we encourage you to consider that as you look at your ballot to keep Akron City and Strong. And so, good luck to our friends and our colleagues across the city and across the county, and to all those who have issues on the ballot, and we encourage you to go out and vote. I also, during the last couple of weeks, had the opportunity to attend the spaghetti dinner, the fundraiser for Camara Cody and Jada Snowden and their family, had an opportunity to speak with both of the parents, and, you know, I wish that I could say I could afford them some measure of comfort, but I don't know how you comfort parents who just lost two children tragically. It was very touching to be there, and although the entire cluster and that community came together for that family, I specifically want to point out Buckto, Kraus, and Schumacher, and what a fantastic example they were in coming together as a community to really support and wrap their arms around that family. That's a very difficult time, I can't imagine what they're going through. And it just meant a lot just to walk into Buckto and be able to see the entire cafeteria just packed with people from the neighborhood there to support that family, and to see Schumacher and Kraus and Buckto having really just stepped up and gone above and beyond, and their faculty and staff were there. And it was a really proud moment, even though it was a very difficult one, so kudos to them. Also got to attend the State of the County, the State of the County or County Executive Eileen Shapiro, and see some of our Akron Public School students perform, and what a testimony to the arts programs that we have here at Akron Public Schools, to see those kids really step up and put on a professional top-notch performance before the State of the County. Also attended the GAR Foundation, awarded our superintendent their last half-year award, and several of us were present to be able to see the superintendent accept yet another accolade in this community for the work that he does on behalf of the district, so congratulations to you. Also, as several of our board members pointed out, attended the Project Ujima Open House, LeBron James Family Foundation Hometown Hall. I also attended the school readiness summit and a portion of that. And one breakout that really interested me, and I brought this up the other night, was the one that talks about something that we've been bringing up here at Akron Public Schools, which is trauma-informed education. And it really was about how do you teach kids who are experiencing trauma? First of all, what is trauma? How does it affect kids physiologically, biologically, socially, emotionally? And when kids are experiencing trauma, whether that's homelessness, or hunger, or abuse, or neglect, or how do you get them to come into school and learn fractions when, when they're dealing with all of those other things? And so it was a great breakout session, the, I wish I could remember the presenter's name, I really thought she was fantastic, would love to see her again at some point. Also had the pleasure to present to our resident educator leadership forum, that is the forum where our teachers that are in their fourth year, who are getting ready to seek permanent licensure, are going through a year-long leadership enrichment program, and they get to hear from different people around the community. And it always starts off with the board president, and so I had the opportunity to present to them and talk about my leadership journey and what that meant, and pass on any nuggets of wisdom that I might have, though I think I probably can learn more from that than anything from me. So I want to say thanks to Karen G. Jick and Diana Gearhart for inviting me and giving me the opportunity to talk to our teachers. And I think everyone else covered the last few things on my list, so it's been a busy week. Again, just want to encourage you to get out to vote, and thanks for all that you guys do in the weeks between the board meetings.
I just want to say, I mentioned last year, mentioned this year before the election, that I hope that in the future we make, whether through student councils in the high schools or whatever, voter cards available, you know, not shoving it down anybody's throat or anything, whether they vote Democrat, Republican, Independent, doesn't matter, just running into a lot of kids, hey, you registered to vote? No. Then did they have something going on in government class at school? Nope. You know, so, you know, just to throw it out there, it doesn't need to be any of us or any office holders or anything else, but that'd be a good project for the student councils at the schools to get the kids involved at that age and they'll stay maybe focused and involved throughout, so I just thought I'd mention it.
Thank you, that's a good point. Sometimes we see the voter turnout, we see that anywhere from 9 to 12 percent of the community is making decisions for the rest of the community, and that's a sad state of affairs, so anything we can do, encourage that, I think would be welcome. Thanks for the comments. All right, at this point, we are going to move on to recognitions, and first, we are going to do some recognitions from the Ohio School Boards Association. And so if we could ask Cheryl Connolly and Deanna Popa to start making their way up front, and if Reverend Walker would help me, I am going to step over to the other microphone, I think. Thank you.
At the Ohio School Boards Association Northeast Region Conference on October 4th, Dr. Curtis Walker and Debbie Walsh were given awards to bring back to two of our high schools, and we'd like to present those today. So Ms. Connolly is here to accept the School of Honor for High Performing Schools Awards for the Akron Early College High School. And in part, it says, "Congratulations on earning the distinction of the Ohio Department of Education School of Honor for High Performing Schools, recognized on October 4th, 2017 at the OSBA Northeast Ohio Fall Conference." So congratulations to the Akron Early College High School.
We're wearing an Ambassador's jacket.
I have my other Ambassador over there.
Did you just say something?
Just thank you very much, it's a great honor. Both of these students contributed to the success of our school, being great OST performers and doing well in college, and so it's great to have them in our program.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Popa is here to accept the Momentum Award for STEM High School. And in part, it says, "Congratulations on earning the distinction of Ohio Department of Education Momentum Award, recognized on October 4th, 2017 at the OSBA Northeast Ohio Fall Conference."
I just want to introduce Cameron, she's one of our student leaders at STEM, and she's one of the reasons that we received this one forward.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We're always proud, of course, when our schools win honors, we know that doesn't happen overnight. We want to thank the principals, the faculty, and the staff at those schools for all the hard work that they put in, and for the students for, for really making us APS proud, so thank you so much for that. Next, we want to do the students with perfect scores, and I'm going to ask Mr. Miller to help me out with this.
And it's always exciting for us to see all of you here and to bring all of the students in to be recognized, so thank you all for being here. Thank you to those that unfortunately, and we apologize for the size of the boardroom here, thank you to those that are in the hallway as well, and if you are in the hallway and you would like to come in when your student is being recognized and take any photos, please feel free to do so. We'll kind of hang out a second. There are about 17 here, I'm going to read more names than that, just in case someone was able to show up at the last minute. Last month, we received the results of the Spring 2017 Ohio State Test, and it's our pleasure to recognize the students who earned a perfect score on one or more areas of the test. There were 30 students with a perfect score, which is phenomenal, and of those 30 students, one student earned a perfect score in three areas last year, came back and earned a perfect score again this year in one of the same subject areas. Another student who earned perfect scores in two areas last year, came back to earn a perfect score in one of those subjects again this year. Six other students are also repeats, having earned one perfect score last year and again this year. Two of the students, one a 6th grader and one an 8th grader, are brothers, and the 8th grader is also a repeat perfect score performer. One student is the daughter of one of our administrators, and she is also one of the repeats from last year. And these perfect scores didn't, of course, happen by accident, it took a lot of hard work in studying on the part of the students and on the part of the teachers, and also on the part of the parents who are, I'm sure, were there to guide and support. And it took a lot of encouragement, so we'd like to thank the parents, the student, or the parents, the, the staff for being a part of our children's education and for doing so much to help them succeed. So as we called the student's name, we'd like them to come forward to be recognized, receive their certificate of achievement. We also have a little goodie bag because, you know, why not give them more stuff to do more homework? And we'll take any photos that parents would like to take, so we're going to start with Savannah Murphy, Grade 3, English Language Arts, from Richmond CLC. I believe Savannah is here, so we're going to...
I'm her teacher.
You're five.
I asked her, are you coming?
You heard it.
I'm her 3rd grade teacher from... (Applause) Thanks to the president. I thought it might be...
Thanks Savannah, isn't he lovely? All right, Brooklyn Santana, Grade 3, Math, from Forest Hill.
Is it principal too?
Yes.
Mom, you want to get in there? We'll take a picture for you.
Theo Wall, Grade 3, Math, King CLC. Moving on to 4th grade, Maeva Lyle, Grade 4, English Language Arts, two perfect scores last year, from KCCLC.
All right.
And brother.
Jeremy, Jeremy, come here.
In one Lyle, you get them all.
That's right.
Get everybody.
There you go.
Yeah.
Logan Porter, Grade IV, Math, one perfect score last year, from Ritzman CLC. Is Logan with us? Yes, he is. Derek Steedley, Grade IV, Math, one perfect score last year, Ritzman CLC. Derek Steedley, Grade IV, Math, one perfect score last year, Ritzman CLC. Get over there, Dad. I'll take it for you. Want to take? Get in there, Dad. Get in there. And that's, that was our fourth grade students. Our fifth grade students, Pramika Tamang, Grade V, English Language Arts, Venice, now at Dennis. Isabella Rambler, Grade V, English Language Arts, one perfect score last year, STEM William Huber, Huber, Grade V, Math, one perfect score last year, Miller South. Noah Bechtel, Grade V, Math, STEM Middle School. That concludes our fifth grade students. Sixth grade, Adam Cumston, Grade VI, Math, higher. And I'm not sure that Adam's with us. Sophia Becker, Grade VI, Math, STEM Middle School. We will, Sophia's with us, but we are going to give her her stuff separately. Thomas Demuth, Grade VI, Math, STEM Middle School.
The letter D is pronounced demon. Where the letter D says its name, and the word myth, as in mythology.
All right.
And I'm sure I have my camera, please?
Oh, yes, yeah. Here.
Noah DeFiore, Grade VI, Math, STEM Middle School. David Grubb, Grade VI, Math, STEM Middle School. Kenton Kern, Grade VI, Social Studies, Litchfield.
All right. Got to show that bow tie.
That's all about that.
There you go. There you go. There you go. There you go. That's nice. Nice, nice.
For seventh grade, David Bechtel, Grade VII, Math, one perfect score last year, STEM. And David, of course, is the brother to Noah, who was recognized a few moments ago. Grace Moritz, Grade VII, Math, three perfect scores last year, from STEM. Don't think Grace was able to make it tonight. For our, for our high school students, Maximilian Newman, Algebra I, Firestone. Benjamin Engdahl, Algebra I, one perfect score last year, STEM Middle School, now STEM High School. Kauta Tabata, Algebra I, STEM Middle School, now STEM High School. All right, and that completes our presentation for the Spring 2017 OST Perfect Scores. I just want to say, congratulations again to our students. I mean, outstanding work, all of you. We couldn't be more proud. This is what we worked for every year, every day, to get you guys to that point. And we're so proud that you represented us so well, that you represented your family and yourselves so incredibly well. Thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you to the parents, grandparents, family, friends, who just take a moment every day to ask your kids, "How's school?" It's, it's still an important question, and we appreciate that you are here tonight, supporting them again. So, thanks a lot. Congratulations, and have a good night.
The director of the...
She needs to answer me.
All right.
This feels like a complete, another, a second board meeting. Thank you for your patience and for accommodating us as we, the students, a few minutes ago. We appreciate that. We have two requests to address the board tonight. One from Mr. David Skelton, one from Patricia Halper. We'll call them up individually. Mr. Skelly, if you want to make your way up front. I would remind both that we provide public comment of three minutes. The board does not typically respond to the public comment, period. We have the superintendent on our behalf, get back with, get back with you directly. Mr. Pendleton will help keep time. And with that, Mr. Skelton will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to provide you with some insights to why the Culinary Arts Program should continue at Kenmore Garfield. As I met with senior administration, I realized the reason why the program is closing could be money. Yes, real-life experience and hands-on learning costs money. I was told the following: We have new kitchens at Bookdale and East, and one coming soon to Ellet, so we can't close those down. Very understandable. We must remain good stewards of taxpayers' funds and effectively utilize these facilities. We can have them go to East or Ellet and join a hospitality program. Unfortunately, those are not the same pathways. We could then have them go to join, to Bookdale, to join their nutrition and dietetics pathway, again, not the same. Then I was told we will just put them in another pathway. Considering that this program is full to student capacity, it appears this is a career that students are definitely interested in. They have found success both directly from high school and in continued education. We are slated to have business manage, business logistics, nature, and management, but are those fields truly viable as a career if you can't continue without higher education? According to Career Cruising, there are not many job graduates in those fields. Wouldn't taxpayers' funds rather be spent continually expanding a field such as culinary arts, which offers a wider, a wide array of avenues to success for both college and career readiness? Another proposed academy for Kenmore Garfield is environmental health, which had four, yes, four students who visited that program, the Quaker Square Showcase. That is four out of 1,500 students who visited that day. Yet, we are closing the most-attended program at Kenmore Garfield High School, and one of the popular programs citywide. If you look at the numbers, we have more students than any other program at Kenmore Garfield High School, including the two machining programs combined. In fact, we continue to have a waiting list to get in and have to turn students away this year. Instead of closing culinary arts, we should be expanding it. Every single criterion that was set before us in order to have a pathway considered was met or exceeded. We have demand, we have high-paying jobs, we're in established pathway, we're one of the very few programs to offer an alternative pathway to graduation. We offer opportunities for students to start their career right out of high school and a road to college. We have student, parent, and community support. All we are missing is commitment from this board. So, tonight, I am respectfully asking the Akron Board of Education and Superintendent to consider the following. Eight hundred taxpayers and business owners who support college and careers pathways and have signed petitions in support of keeping this academy, pathway in the academy. They realize the importance of this program, and it benefited from seeing our students in action. Parents, taxpayers who have been vocal in calling the board and the superintendent, signing petitions and supporting their students. Most importantly, the students. Students have the passion that have gone through this pathway, students currently in this program, and those yet to come. We're asking the superintendent and Board of Election to reverse your decision and allow a proven pathway to continue. If you're only going to stick with statistics and data, then you fail to take into consideration the passion and needs of the community, parents, and students. These students are people, not just numbers, and they deserve to work toward a career that they enjoy. If you have or would like any information, additional information, I've emailed all of you today. You have my cell phone number, you know how to get ahold of me. For the sake of the community, the parents, the students, we ask that you do the right
Thank you, Mr. Skelly.
Thank you.
Ms. Halper.
Good evening. I'm Patty Halper, the Executive Director of the Ohio Pro Start Program. For those who don't know, Pro Start is a national training program for those interested in the culinary arts and restaurant management for juniors and seniors in high school. Nationally, Pro Start has 140,000 students and we're in 1,800 high schools. In Ohio, we're in 56 schools and over 2,000 students are enrolled. The program being taught here at Kenmore Garfield High School is an active Pro Start program. They have over 50 students in class currently, as well as a waiting list. Their educator, David Skelly, is a seasoned, passionate individual, as well as a skilled educator. His positive numbers, coupled with one of the few industries that is significantly increasing in the number of employment opportunities available, are important reasons why this program should not only continue, but to expand to meet the need of the third-largest private employer in Ohio, the food service industry. The education foundation of the Ohio Pro Start Program oversees and services Garfield High School. Pro Start students learn life skills, not just culinary skills. They're flexible, they're problem solvers, they take the initiative, they have leadership, and they're dependable. That can be used in the food service industry career, as well as another career that they choose to enter. Pro Start students earn two credentials. One is Serve Safe, which is a food service training certificate, and the other is a Certificate of Achievement, which is industry-recognized as well as receive articulation credit through colleges and universities, not only in Ohio, but nationally. Pro Start has tremendous industry support, as I have a letter here that I will submit to the board, signed by President and CEO of the Ohio Restaurant Association, as well as its 24-member board. They are 100% committed to not only Pro Start, but the program here at Garfield High School. There are not many training programs that can illustrate the type of industry support that Pro Start has. Whether from a speaker in the classroom, mentoring at our boot camp, judging at our Pro Start competition, or awarding scholarships, industry is there. On the state level, we award almost $1 million in scholarship annually, and on a national level, we award over $2 million. Members of the food service industry provide all these types of supports and services, but more importantly, they hire our Pro Start students. We work with several companies that look to Pro Start first when hiring. Yes, they can and do often start at entry-level positions, but that doesn't necessarily mean minimum wage. There is opportunity for advancement that those who want it, and our students do want it. We have several success stories of Pro Start graduates that have gone on to very prestigious places around the world. They open their own business, they're restaurant managers, they own food trucks. Each student chooses their own career path, as Pro Start provides them a solid basis for a career with limited opportunities around the world. The food service industry presents a variety of career options. You could be a waitstaff, where you can earn $10 to $20 an hour, depending on where you work. An entry-level chef can earn between $30,000 and $60,000. A sous chef can earn between $26,000 and $47,000. And a catering manager can earn between $30,000 and $50,000. The food service industry employs over a half a million, which make up 10% of the employment in the state of Ohio, and that number is expected to grow by 9.3% in the next 10 years. No other industry can say that. These students at Garfield High School are the future faces of the food service industry. On behalf of our 2,000 members, please do not eliminate Garfield Culinary Program, as these students future depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I said, whenever we have requests to address the board, our policies, the Superintendent will get back in touch with you. But based on the information that you've provided us and the discussions that we've had, even via email over the last couple of weeks, I did want to at least remind you that we did ask the Superintendent to pull together some information based on, again, on some of the discussions that we've had and emails that have gone back and forth. So we'll be getting those numbers and that information back, so that we can dig a little deeper. Thank you for coming. With that, that's probably a good time for us to move as well. We have a presentation on the Early Learning Program from Tammy Brady and Patricia Cronin.
Good evening. I'm here tonight, along with Pat Cronin, our Early Learning Program Coordinator, to share some updates with you related to our Early Learning Program. Our Early Learning Program serves children both with and without disabilities. We have classes five days a week, both morning and afternoon classes, so about two and a half hours per day for the student. We also provide some services to students with IEPs who participate in Head Start or other private preschool programs through our itinerant preschool intervention specialists. And then likewise, any student who's a preschooler with an IEP, they may qualify for and access related services, such as speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, or physical therapy. And although most of our classrooms are in equal balance of students with and without disabilities, we do have some specialized classes, such as those for students with autism and students with hearing impairments. There's just a few photos of our kiddos in action over at the Early Learning Program. The ELP program is licensed by the Ohio Department of Education, and all of our sites have a five-star rating from the Step Up to Quality. We have programs for parents and families through a family services specialist, and also through a transition teacher. The transition teacher works with our teachers, both in preschool, as well as on the elementary level, works with parents, and also with the students as they transition into a traditional elementary setting to help them be successful in that setting. So Pat's going to provide you with some more detailed information about the program.
Good evening. We have several classrooms now throughout the district. We are in 11 sites at present. Our main sites are, of course, our program at Stewart, which has eight classrooms. We have five classrooms at Essex, which is also preschool-only. And at Reach Opportunity Center, we currently have two classrooms available. And at that particular site, there's also Head Start, and that's the AMHA Housing Site also. So we do have a cross-section throughout the district. We were lucky this year to open two classrooms at North High School, and we are also working with the Early Childcare Program at North. Our student population trends are kind of interesting. Over the past several years, and I took from 2011, '12 to present, we have definitely had an increase in the number of our peer models or typically developing students. And our number looks a little low at this point in time right now, because this is only as of 11/5. The other numbers that you see are at the end of the school year, how many students we had as peers and students with IEPs. The other interesting trend is that the number of students with IEPs has seemed to decrease in number, to some degree, over the last few years. And we're still trying to investigate the why of this, because we do evaluate many, many students throughout the school year. And as you may know, if a student is three and has been in services through Help Me Grow, or if they turn three during the year, but they have special needs, they can enter the program at any time. So in preschool, we have what we call a rolling enrollment. And as long as we have openings in our peer slots, we also will continue to accept students throughout the school year. Funding has also given us an interesting story, because when I started with the district, our funding was much different than it is today. And as you can see from the chart, we have two different fundings. We have special education funding, which has remained fairly consistent. We did drop this year for special education funding, because they did do kind of a cross-state survey of how they were providing IDEA money. And most districts did see a decrease in their IDEA money for preschool. Our early childhood grant monies, we've been very fortunate, because in the 2014-15 school year, they really started giving more of these slots available for students who are on the low-income level and meet the poverty guidelines. As a result of those funding sources, the last few years, we have received over $1 million in funding. During 2016 and 2017, our money was relatively stable, but now we're into the new biennium, and so we have had an increase. And we do attribute that to more slots and advocacy in our county for more students in Akron Public Schools and getting those dollars for our youngest children. We do follow the Ohio Early Learning and Development Standards, and as you can see, there are five different areas that we concentrate in. And those are the areas that we do assess our students in on a yearly basis. We do some local testing, and we also do state testing, where we do provide information to the state on how our students are progressing, and those are compiled. We have had an increase in the use of technology in our classroom. Every one of our classrooms has computers, we use iPads, we use some tablets. We're working with a couple different resources to provide our students with some basic skills programs. We are really trying to have our students acquire more mouse skills, so that when they go into kindergarten, they will be proficient in using the mouse, so they can access the map testing as they move forward. We are moving forward also with the One World on a Small Scale this year. By mid-year, we will be putting some tablets in place that will be going home, just probably one to two days a week with families, to pilot that and how that's going to work at the preschool level. And I'm going to turn it over to Mary Kelly for the next part of the presentation.
Okay. I'll just do that over here.
Okay.
So we are really excited about two partnerships with Summit Education Initiative. One, we actually started last year as a pilot at Bettis. It was a 10-week family literacy engagement program, where they, SEI, produced all of our materials for us. We did not have any expense on the part of the district to cover. And they also provided us with a lead literacy person from the University of Akron, who actually would go and secure the materials and then send them to the school. And then at Bettis, there was a champion, which was their coach, their literacy coach, actually would work in collaboration with the University of Akron coach, with the families. And the reason why that was really important at Bettis was because of the ESL barrier. So our interpreters were also in place, meeting with the families weekly, to support this program. It was so successful that we decided to branch out to two additional schools this year, which is Leggett and also Robinson. So again, it's a 10-week program, where materials go home once a week. They meet with the families, explain how to use the books and the resources that support the books, and then at the end of the week, they get a new set. And in the winter of 2018, we're going to add 13 additional schools to this program. The second collaboration with SEI is called the Readiness Coalition, and this is where we are transitioning our pre-K students into kindergarten through various programming opportunities. So there's actually going to be a kickoff scheduled for January 25th at the Akron Civic Theater, where each school will have a representative present. They will be awarded a $500 check that will go towards this kindergarten transitioning programming. So each school will create their own coalition, which will be in charge of creating these transition programs. We also have a district team, which Pat will sit on, and Tammy, Julie Mann will be a part of the team, along with myself. And again, we will just look at, how do we make a smoother transition from pre-K to K to help ensure that our students who are in pre-K wind up in Akron Public Schools and that they're stronger?
Now how does this all coalesce with Head Start? Is there a partnership? Is there a way where we're funneling not only our own students? Because we have Head Starts, if I'm correct. And Porch Path, and Robinson, and a number of schools who are already at Head Start. So how are we all working, or are we working together?
Yes, we are. We have an active partnership with Head Start. Head Start does refer a lot of students who they feel have special needs to our program. Sometimes those students become a member of our program and Head Start, and they go to both programs. Some students stay in Head Start, and we serve them with our itinerant teachers in the Head Start program. So our itinerant teachers do also go out to Head Start. We collaborate with Head Start on some of the early childhood initiatives. We have in the past done some joint professional development, and we hopefully will be doing more of that in the future. But we do have an active partnership with Head Start. In fact, tomorrow, or actually later this week, they had to cancel meeting, but we have partnership meetings regularly throughout the year.
In addition, excuse me, in addition to some of our collaborative efforts, one of the county initiatives was really spearheaded by a wonderful opportunity from Mr. Bravo, as well as the latitude from Mr. James, to allow me to take part on behalf of Akron Public Schools, to look at a county initiative, to really look at how early childhood education is impactful across entire Summit County. We realize that many of these gaps definitely exist, and that there are unique efforts being developed individually across Summit County. But what we believe is that if we share in one concerted effort, that we could actually enhance the lives of many of our kids prior to them stepping foot in this system, whether it's early childhood education, kindergarten readiness, and/or some of our own. So this initiative is one that we recognize that we really want to have a hard look at what our students are able to achieve, that we have to get them at birth, moving all the way until we move into a much more systematic educational system. So that is being looked at across Summit County. We're going to start seeing some collaborative efforts to ensure that we raise awareness in this area.
Yeah, I have a comment, a couple questions. I'm glad to hear this, because actually, one of my platforms for running this this year's election is early childhood education, and because I'm seeing it come full circle. We focused on a lot of early childhood education, and we kind of got away from it. Now we need to get back in part of, other part of it that made me look at is Mrs. Outman and the reading program, or how we've done so well, but we start with these kids early. So I'm glad to hear that we're doing that, and we need to stay focused on that, because I'm a product of early childhood, pre-K, as well as kindergarten, as well as both of my daughters. And so I've seen what it's really done for them. I couldn't say for me, but they really benefit from it. But I'm glad to see it. But I wanted to know, how can we, or what can we do to secure more funding in order to open even more pre-K and kindergarten classes for our kids? I think it's good for them to go through the pre-K. I'd rather for us to focus and get money upfront for pre-K and then be able to transition them into kindergarten. So I think that'll be very, very beneficial for the students, not just at their early age, but in the long run as well.
Well, we were very fortunate this year that there were slots allocated throughout the state of Ohio. Unfortunately, there were the state of Ohio. Unfortunately, there were only 53 slots allocated for Summit County. But we were able to grab all those slots, 53 slots. So that makes a big difference. You know, as the budget goes through, the legislature, they allocate so many dollars, and then the dollars are divided between all of the counties across the state. And we try as hard as we can to lobby for more. And we were fortunate, definitely, this year to pick up all of the slots that we had available to us.
Is there any other fundings that are available that we can kind of, I kind of say band-aid?
There are some, you know, there are some limited grant fundings available, and we are looking into that. We have been working with our grants person here to see if we can secure more funding in that manner, too.
Great. Thank you.
Just for clarification, the slide says expanding winter of 2018. Does that mean next month or January? Or does that mean December of 2018?
I think that's, that was on your slide, Mary.
So the partnership right now where we started with for this school year in the fall, Leggett and Robinson. In winter, January, we will be ready to expand it to 13 additional schools.
Okay, so that coincides with the January 27th. Okay, thank you.
First of all, I want to commend the staff who are asked for an update on this like last. Was this already in the works? I mean, that's got to be the most impressive response I've ever seen as far as.
We're not going to tell you what was.
It's probably on the calendar for here, but I'm impressed anyway. So as far as, you said that there were, that usually the numbers go up as the year goes on. Do we recruit, or how does that happen?
We definitely do continue to recruit. We have some sites now that technically we're at capacity. We still have openings throughout, and we work with Mark Williamson and his staff in order to recruit. We also continually get referrals through word of mouth. We have had, I think, five to 10 applications just within the past week from parents who didn't know about the program, who sent in the applications online. So we're continually doing screenings on students. And then, of course, our students with special needs, we have that strong flow that's coming from the zero-to-three group because they've already been receiving some services. But we have a lot of parents who are new to the community that have called us and looking for preschool, so hoping to accommodate. Unfortunately, some of our site, we do have waiting lists because in that particular neighborhood, parents may not have access to go to another location, so they have to stay in a particular neighborhood.
Well, that's what Mr. Pendleton and I ran into when we were at North. There was some folks who felt most comfortable keeping the kids right where they were, and transportation and things like that were peer barriers.
Barriers, yes.
Yeah, created some barriers. So that's good to know. I noticed, Mary, we had the pilot program at Beddys.
Yeah.
So because that building closed and the children moved, did the program continue? Or is it just kind of on hold until we do this increase in January?
In January, we'll continue. Because what they did was they said, Mary, we have 100 packets. And so we looked at schools that we could expand to within that 100. And then discussing with Ellen, she was like, you know, this is wonderful. All of the kids should have it. So I said, can we get some more packets? And they were like, yes, but you would have to wait till January in order for them to order the materials and get everything ready. So the schools are going to, we have a retreat on Wednesday. They're going to get the information then, and they'll be ready to start in January second semester.
Right. Mr. Pendleton, can you have throw that 25th on our calendar? We'll try to come out and cheer.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
While they're closing up, I, we had, we were a foster family for a little bit, but we had a foster child that benefited from the Early Learning Program. Did extremely well. Pat and her staff do a great job. And, you know, speaking of the funding, you know, just a couple of weeks ago at our last board meeting, accepted additional funding from the state for the 53 seats that Pat was referring to. But that's something that we've got to continue to press on, both at the state and the federal level. I mean, when you look at all of the research that shows the return on your investment for every dollar that you invest in early childhood, but then you look at what we receive in terms of state and federal funding for early childhood education, it's barely a drop in the bucket. And that's something, and when you add that to the fact that it's one of the few affirmative obligations in the state constitution or the legislature to provide, an affirmative duty that says you will do this. Otherwise, it says you'll pass all laws and you'll do this. But one of the few affirmative responsibilities that the legislature has in the state constitution is to provide, you know, for a thorough and efficient system of public education. And that includes early childhood when you look at the data and the research. So I think that, you know, that's just something, and we do, oh, they're gone. It just disappeared. We do continue to lobby for that, but I, you know, and I'm sure they know that. But I, you know, whatever we can do to help, you know, utilize us, take advantage of the fact that, you know, when we're down in Columbus as well, whatever we can do, if you have information to arm us with as we're talking to our delegates, we'd be happy to pass that on. So.
Okay.
Mr. President, just that I know a couple of meetings, I challenged our superintendent and treasurer to come up with some money so that we can have universal early childhood education. They haven't given me any money yet. But we are thankful for the wonderful work that we are doing, the 50-plus additional seats. But you are absolutely correct. We are not using our resources to affect the area that is needed. Summit Education just had the workshop, the readiness workshop, and many of those persons in attendance dealt with children, early childhood education, children trying to meet those needs. It's unfortunate when we're looking on the horizon from the federal government and those who are over education. The emphasis is not on early childhood education, but the emphasis is on charter schools, emphasis on spending money for choice. And all those things may look great, but they don't meet the needs of the masses of people who are in need of that. And so we have to be very vigilant about what's going to happen on that level. Because that level is turning the faucet off even more so. We're grateful. We got the million-plus dollars, but we've got to be careful that those monies aren't taken away quicker than we think because of the vision of those persons who are in charge of the federal government who have funds that could be used for the very things that we're talking about now. Well, we see results. It's not like we're saying, give us money, and there are no results. There is stack and stack of viable, reliable evidence that this works. And our children could be a lot further along, a third-way guarantee, other things that they're required to have expertise in if we have the funds to meet the needs early on.
Mr. President, I would like to challenge us, as long as the Lord's willing, that we all be here on this board after tomorrow. And if not, some other board members, but I'm going to say that all of us that are here, I'd like to challenge us to push a little bit more wherever we can to seek funding and seek the help that we can get for early childhood education. Because I think sometimes it has to come from somewhere, and some people at times, we stay back and we don't push the button and say, okay, now it's time to move forward. I think it's time for, not just us as board, but I'm going to challenge us as board members, but even with our colleagues across the state to push for more of these things. Because I think the more we have in numbers, the more we can get. So I would challenge all of us to push for that in the very near future.
Thank you. And I talked about when I went to OSB Legislative Update, I knew we had, there was a discussion on early childhood. Doesn't have anything to do with funding, but maybe when we're in Columbus next week for the Capitol Conference, Senate Bill 216 talks about preschool operating standards for pupil teacher ratios for three-year-olds and four-year-olds. So there is some discussion in Columbus right now on early childhood. I don't see anything about funding in here for it, but it may be something we can take into consideration. And if my memory is correct, there's a breakout session next week at Capitol Conference with Cleveland Public Schools on early childhood. And when I was at the SEI function a couple of weeks ago at Greystone, I had a conversation, and unfortunately Debbie's not here, but she was in the conversation as well. And we were asking about, it was with a gentleman from the Fifth Third Foundation, and he was talking about how they were helping with early childhood education from the standpoint of funding it. And they have, I guess, like something like an overflow of students more than they can. And I asked, you know, how do you find them, or how do they find you? And they actually put a person in, I believe, a free clinic. And when people are sitting in the waiting room, they grab them at that point in time. So I don't know if that's something we could do if we have the manpower to do that. But if we've got open slots that need filled, I guess we need to be a little more proactive on that. And hopefully, we are proactive, and it's just, you know, a timing thing at this point in time. But I thought that was worth mentioning. So maybe we can do a little bit of lobbying when we're in Columbus next week, maybe go to that breakout session, see who's talking, and talk about the Senate Bill 216 and see if it has anything to do with any funding for it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Approval of the regular meeting minutes for October 23, 2017. You have a motion?
Second.
A motion in the second. Any questions or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 43 personnel recommendations and two additional personnel recommendations on supplement number one. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So move. Second. I have a motion in the second. Any questions or discussion on the personnel recommendations? Hearing none, roll call please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes, abstaining from, whatever number my name is at. Number 42 and 43. No, 42. Thank you.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstaining from item number 37.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes, abstaining from item 38.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes, abstaining from item 39.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, abstaining from 40 and 41.
Mr. Otter?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration two motions and five resolutions on the consent agenda. I would like to point out that the dollar amount for the consulting fees in item number six has been revised to $148,116 to reflect pre-construction fees versus construction fees. With this change, these recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So I'm going to shake. A motion in the second. I'd also like to add the Innovation Generation Scholarship, number seven. We will get a future report from Nathan Mortimer, I believe. Correct him?
Yes.
From the CFO from the University of Akron. I did ask for a little additional information on a breakdown on what that looks like. Any other questions or discussions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 11 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Second.
I have a motion in the second on the business affairs recommendations. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
I know earlier, Mr. Alexander requested some information on bullying. So I'm going to provide a copy of our 2016-17 certified bullying reports. And we will have a report at an upcoming board meeting to further go through those numbers. So I'll pass around
I gave my president's report as part of community school receptions, treasures, we think.
I know the last thing on everyone's mind is November elections of 2018. However, Akron has been invited to participate in an Ohio School Funding Bipartisan Committee. It's going to be monthly between now and next November. Representative Bob Cutt and John Patterson. To my knowledge, we're the only urban at the table, so I'm pretty excited about that. And I think it's really timely that we talk about early childhood tonight. The title of the email is "A Comprehensive Review on How Ohio Determines and Distributes Investments for Pre-K Through 12." So the funding group specifically designed, there's about 12 of us across the state of Ohio that are going to meet monthly to study and hopefully provide some feedback for the next governor and the next governor in flight. So I'm excited to provide that back to Akron Public Schools. A reminder that OSBA starts Sunday, and it starts at 1:00 on Sunday. And then the seminar on early childhood is Tuesday at 1:00 p.m. in its Cleveland and Cincinnati schools. That concludes my report.
Community reports, legal contracts and board policy?
Yes.
Finance and capital management? Instructional policy and student achievements?
Just quickly, there's an update at your place for what was reviewed, and I'm not going to leave anything to you today. I'll let you review.
Any unfinished business?
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about our CLC usage and specifically some of the complaints we get out of the community about some roadblocks that are put up for people getting into the community learning centers when Akron Public Schools is not using them. Through different conversations, Patrick had a conversation, I also had a conversation, they were separate, but they were with Kyle Kudicev from the Knight Foundation. And he's committed funding to us to do some kind of a pilot program between us and the city of Akron to help with people who find the only roadblock to using the CLCs would be the insurance roadblock, not having the general liability or personal liability coverage that Akron Public Schools and/or the city of Akron requires anybody to use the CLCs. More in the case of the city of Akron, that's always been a requirement for their community centers that are not attached to the CLCs. I know last month, we had a discussion, Deborah sent myself and some other people some statistics on the usage of the CLCs and the roadblocks that we have. It's interesting that, you know, we, according to our statistics, only 1% of the people who come to us to use the CLCs are rejected. And there's about five bullet points as to why. And not one of those bullet points is insurance roadblock. So we're not even sure how huge or small of a roadblock that is at this point in time. But maybe this money can help us fund a pilot, and we can start actually piling statistics on if the insurance is a roadblock or not. I have not been in contact with anybody at the city with the exception of our former colleague on this board, Veronica Sims. I had a brief conversation with her yesterday regarding this, and I'm going to reach out to her here in the near future. But, you know, it's the starting of a discussion and see how many people on the city side of things have the roadblock for insurance. Like I said, it's sort of a drumbeat we hear. Like I said, it's sort of a drumbeat we hear, and now we've got a little bit of money to actually find out if, in fact, that's the case. Another part of the discussion was, as well, some of the, I guess, initial barriers, people find they don't necessarily know who to contact, us or the city, when using that. So hopefully, this can be part of the discussion as well. Maybe we can take some of the funds and also pilot, you know, maybe come up with an app or something that centralizes where people goes, and, you know, send us elsewhere, or maybe we just take ownership of it. That's just my, a thought, not a directive or anything like that, but just bringing it up to start the conversation and see what we might be able to do with that, and what, how we can use those funds, because we've pretty much been given free rein to use it as we see fit, as long as it goes down the path of talking about the usage and roadblocks in the CLC. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything.
I have a comment, because I've had that same question a number of times, and Veronica and I have talked, and that was one of the topics that we wanted, she wanted to bring up, where we have the joint meeting between the city and Akron, city of Akron and the state of education, because there's trouble, and people are saying, well, we built these schools to be CLCs, and why can't they have any? So I've kind of challenged some of them to come up with some programs that we can use in those CLCs, so hopefully that will help as well. But I think that would be a good idea to possibly have a pilot, so we can see why.
Not sure how widely we disseminated that, but if we didn't, Debbie put a really good two-page fact sheet essentially together, and it was in preparation, it was in response to a news story that had been done about the discussion on the city council side as to the use of the CLCs. And then we, I had gotten invited to participate in a radio interview, and so we pulled together some information and some facts. Our CLCs get used about 27,000 times a year, 27,000 different events. 99% of those applications are approved, only 1% are not approved. Sometimes that's just scheduling conflict, or the type of use, or something, you know, so, but none of them are insurance. So again, this money would be a good way to test out whether or not insurance really is a problem, because there's no way of knowing if people were turned off once because of insurance and never tried again, then the only way to see if that would fix it would be to cure that problem now. But maybe we can send out that information to the full board so that they can see the stats that we saw in preparation for that story, and if I got it.
The actual information is actually in your board file. It was uploaded after I gave it. If you will check the board file, it should be in there. I'll put it in.
Share box. Google box.
Oh, okay. I was going to ask, how come we all didn't get that then, because that was something I didn't know about, so.
We're still getting used to remembering that.
We went down this road, me and Dave Bryant came down here, I bet, a dozen times, and I thought we negotiated with Terry Greer back in 1992, when they were on city council, and, you know, that the public would have access as long as you didn't interfere with any of the programming in Akron Public Schools. I don't know what happened to that, but...
It might still be the insurance, so, yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out, what the roadblocks are, because I've been just reading from the information, the city has about 2,400 events annually, so it's about, just shy of 19% of usage, and we are the rest of the usage on that, so.
Of that 99%.
So it's kind of not clear where the breakdown is coming.
And I think a lot is, for whatever reason, perception, as you were saying, something may have happened to one individual, and then they got turned off. But if you go around on a weekend, sometimes in the evenings, to some of our buildings, just driving around, they're in use. You know, sometime I want to get right on the phone and shoot, have your number on, speed dial or whatever, because I'm wondering, who's in the building? I don't know anything about it, because we don't need to know everything, and who's there every night, but sometimes, because the question then pops in my mind when somebody says, they're not in use. I'm driving around, they are in use. You know, there are all kinds of activities, functions, and regular use, religious use, nonreligious use, other activities that are going on. So I would like to see on the city side, the data that we have on our side, and then look at that and say, well, where is the problem? Now, we do have some funds that we might be able to use for those people who definitely have a problem with insurance, that we might be able to help, but we need to see some of that data on their side, just to figure out, okay, what's really the story here?
Thanks. Any other comments or questions, anything else to add, Mr. North? Thank you. All right. With that pursuant to how revised code section 121.22G1 to discuss appointment dismissal or compensation of employee, revised code section 1.1.22G2 to consider the purchase or sale of property, and revised code section 121.22G3 to consult with legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and or the school district that are the subject of criminal and in court action. I'm looking for a motion to recess and to executive. So move. Motion. A motion and a second, and questions or discussion before we reduce. If not, we, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.